Good evening, we call the order of the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that six members of the council are present. Councilwoman Karen Lang is excused tonight. We will begin with an opening ceremony. My councilman Jake Fatisa-Malik.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this month, the Utah State Board of Education released a series of data reports, basically scores, on schools across the state. And I've invited, taking the liberty to invite, some of the students, some of the 400-odd students from the Manah Academy Charter School, right here in the heart of West Valley. Because their school was actually ranked number one in English Language Arts when it came to student academic growth. In the same month, in 2018 academic year, Manah Academy was number two in English Language Arts Student Academic Growth when compared to all schools in the state of Utah. So they were actually number one when compared to all schools of the same demographic or size. And they were also number two in math when it came to student academic growth when compared to other schools of the same size, and number six when compared to all schools in the state of Utah. There's also a score called the UGG, which is Uniform Growth Goal. The goal for the entire state of Utah is 47.8% for third grade literacy. Manah Academy this year had an 88.96% in third grade literacy, putting them in the top 10 schools in the state in the area of third grade literacy. And one of the very, very few schools on the west side of Salt Lake and the West Valley City proper to have these kinds of outcomes. And so I've asked them, these wonderful stellar scholars, to open our meeting tonight with traditional protocol. And I'll turn the time over to the scholars at this time.
We are the scholars of Manah Academy. We embody the dreams and aspirations of our ancestors. We represent our families and communities. We are dedicated, committed, and focused. We respect ourselves and all people. We will not yield to uncertainty or fear. We will not accept mediocrity. We take ownership of our academic success. We are future college graduates. We are united. We are family. We are Manah!
Iku ma ma!
Iku wa!
Iku ma ma, iku lu lu! Ikala na ma!
Iku wa!
Iku la na ma!
Iku wa! Iku wa, iku wa! Kai kuwa ma, amakalu el pielu ya!
Iku ma ma!
Iku wa!
Iku ma ma, iku lu lu! Ikala na ma!
Iku wa!
Iku la na ma!
Iku wa! Iku wa, iku wa! Kai kuwa ma, amakalu el pielu ya!
Iku ma ma!
Iku wa!
Iku ma ma, iku lu lu! Ikala na ma!
Iku wa!
Iku la na ma!
Iku wa! Iku wa, iku wa! Kai kuwa ma, amakalu el pielu ya!
We are the scholars of Manah Academy. We are.
We are the scholars of Manah Academy. We embody the dreams and aspirations of our ancestors. We represent our families and communities. We are dedicated, committed, and focused. We respect ourselves and all people. We will not yield to uncertainty or fear. We will not accept mediocrity. We take ownership of our academic success. We are future college graduates. We are united. We are family. We are Manah!
Ladies and gentlemen, I give you the future of West Valley City. And for the record, my daughter's here tonight, and half of these kids are my nieces and nephews. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
With that then, thank you very much. Now, you're all welcome to stay, especially the young ones. I know how interested they would be in all the work that we do. But it's okay if you feel the need to leave. That's okay, that happens often. Not everything we do is exciting as what we just heard, so we'll leave that up to you. We'll just proceed right on with our agenda. Next, we have the approval of our minutes. Mayor, while the teachers and parents are here, having retired after 29 years in education, I know how hard it is to make those goals. So congratulations to all of the scholars of Manah Academy. Then let's go to item five, our approval of the minutes of November 13.
May I move for approval of our minutes?
Send it. Any comments? See none, all in favor of approving the minutes of November 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Or the opposed, say no. Passes your unanimous vote. Next, we have Employee of the Month Award. Who will turn to the councilman Steve Dooley.
Thank you, we have two Employees of the Month this time. Yvette Rodier, are you here? Would you stay standing there so we can properly recognize you on reading the nomination? And also David Black. This nomination was given to us by Ryan Robinson. Yvette Rodier, did I say that right, Yvette? As a Deputy Prosecutor, David Black, please declare. The nomination reads, "I received this commendation from the United States Attorney's Office in reference to Yvette and David's determination to make a difference in their professions and in the West Valley City community. I believe their effort, dedication to their jobs, and the hard work they put forth every day deserve recognition. While David is not specifically mentioned by name in the email, he is the detective who brought the vast majority of these cases to be prosecuted by David. I've also not included names of the offenders, although the risk was impressive for privacy purposes. The role is that email received, fearless leader. Yvette Rodier is not known for cheating her own court, so please allow me to introduce her to the members of the community. In the year Yvette served as a SOUSA, S-O-U-S-A, under USAO, she had 10 indictments against 57 deserving offenders. The matter of interest, how many defendants that year has been listed, listed their names below bullet point status. Note that 23 of the defendants were known gang members, 18 were drug dealers, 22 domestic violence abusers, 2 were angle demons, and 3 were trigger pullers, being heavily involved in shooting and slaughtering. Because of the character concern that Yvette may have displayed for residents of the community, West Valley City is a safer place to live. Their efforts even received notice outside their own jurisdiction, which is something impressive all in itself. Thank you all for the hard work."
If they would come up with a reward for each nomination, shake their hands. It's time to shake Mr. Fatisa-Malik's hand. This is for you. This is for you. You just tell public works where you like it, but...
Thank you for being here. And if there's anything you'd like to say, or anybody you'd like us to recognize, it's kind of a support sheet, that would be appropriate.
But I'm so grateful that Mr. Huber would come and celebrate this with us. It was an honor to do this work, and I love the work that I do now with misdemeanor. So it's an honor to just be with the city, so thank you.
Don't wait yet. Well, you can sit down.
Okay, next, we have a presentation by John Huber, our US Attorney for the District of Utah. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bigelow, and council members. City Manager Pyle and executive staff members, it's great to be here. It's a great joy for me to periodically visit with you. As an alumni, an ambassador of the city of West Valley City, this is where I started early in my career, is here in the City Attorney's Office as a Deputy Prosecutor, and then as the Chief Prosecutor for the city. 2002, 2002 was the year that the city entered into a partnership with the United States Attorney's Office. And we're in 2018 now, and it's become generational at this point. I had the privilege of being that first prosecutor that the city sent to the United States Attorney's Office. There was a companion police officer, detective, who went with me, and we've been working ever since. And so I'm here tonight to give you a brief report, and to also accent the recognition that you just given to the Employees of the Month, Ms. Rodier and Detective Black. Let me focus on the first thing. These are extraordinary professionals. Ms. Rodier, you read off her stats, 57 federal indictments in one year is really quite an achievement. It's an achievement that I have not done in my career, it's an achievement that Ryan Robinson has not done, it's an achievement that the City Attorney Eric Munnerston did not do in our tenure, different tenure's in this position. It's absolutely incredible productivity. And to go after those targets that you mentioned, the gang members, the drug dealers, domestic violence abusers, wow. It's hard to prove a negative, but we are confident when we say that prosecutions that Ms. Rodier brought saved people's lives. And then you look at Detective Black, he is in a longer tenure, so prosecutors usually spend about a year with us before rotating out. And the detectives, sometimes spend longer, Detective Black has been there, he's in his third year, he's brought 59 federal gun cases to justice. To date, 35 of those defendants have been sentenced to a total of, we count months in federal court, 1,442 months in prison. So if you do the math, do the division, that amounts to over 120 years of federal prison terms that Detective Black has brought on behalf of the city and the state of Utah in federal court. It's 120 safe years for a criminal, because these are the worst of the worst offenders. These are the people that bring down our quality of life. And each one of those cases that he brought averaged 42 months, almost four years, three and a half years, in federal custody. That's a reprieve, and it's a tool that we have, that the city has taken advantage of for these 16 years. It's a tool that's not available in the state courts. And too often we see a revolving door of offenders. And they get out too quickly, and they reoffend too quickly. It's hard for you as policymakers to advance policy that provides for our peace and prosperity, the success of our community, commerce, without the rule of law. And as we watch these elections, and we watch the bitter disputes from Washington, the political animosity that we see, it's almost another addiction that we have in the United States, an addiction of conflict in Europe. Spoon-fed every night on the TV. And you wonder, where are the builders? Where are the builders and the providers in our country? Where are the people who gave us this beautiful country, this beautiful city? And I'm here to tell you that Ms. Rodier and Detective Black are two of those protectors that bring us the rule of law that enables you to make this a beautiful city, and to enable our future that you just saw, have a future that has promise and optimism. So tonight, I'd like to present commendations in addition to what you've just done to Detective Black, and this is my significant contribution to public safety award. Don't give out many of these. Dave seems to get a lot of them. Dave, I'd like to present you back and congratulate you.
Thank you.
And this is Department of Justice plaque, very few of these, and we want to extend that to Ms. Rodier for her service, her one-year tenure, and continuing on as a 16-year tradition of partnership between the city and the United States Attorney's Office. It's a partnership that gives, it's a broad horizon partnership, it's one with depth and meaning, and it's one that offers you a leadership ability that no other city has in the state. And I'm confident, because we keep doing it year after year, that it brings a great return to you and your public safety in the city, but also for your reputation amongst all the cities and counties in the state of Utah. Because this commitment that you made is a model for so many others. And I don't want to let the cat out of the bag too much, but later this month, or next month, in December, nationally recognized by the Department of Justice, and the Acting Attorney General and the Deputy Attorney General of the Department of Justice will recognize West Valley City for this 16-year commitment to the cause of justice. So let me present this to Yvette, the latest in a long line of excellent prosecutors in West Valley City. And can we invite Agent in Charge Brian Emily for the photo shoot? We have with us our Federal Agent in Charge of the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives, otherwise known as the ATF, here with us, Brian Emily, who supervises our police officers from West Valley when they're on duty on the federal task force. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, just let me offer some closing remarks and compliments to your City Manager Wayne Pyle. He and I have known each other for a very long time. When I started here in 1996 in the city. And compliment him on his vision that he has for the city, and compliment you as a City Council. You also are a unique body, and the consensus builders that you are, that you cut to the heart of issues, that you don't dwell on meaningless acrimony in your deliberations, and that is noted throughout the community, it's noted throughout the state. And I compliment you on carrying that tradition, West Valley City, where there's professionalism, there's courtesy, there's kindness, and there's vision. So I compliment you, and unexpectedly, I know it's not on the agenda, I make a motion, a petition, if you will, for a helicopter annexation of my home, which is less than two blocks outside of the city limits. Please let me in. Looks like I take that under advisement. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the efforts of all involved. It's a reflection on all of those who work in West Valley, it's a great tradition, and it's been going on. Thank you so much for your work with us. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming. With that then, the next item is a proclamation recognizing November 24, 2018, a Small Business Saturday. Is there anyone here from the small business community that came specifically for this? Then unless specifically you want it read, I think we'll just announce that we supported this, we've done it for a number of years. We encourage those who can to, this Saturday, participate in Small Business Saturday, shopping at some of the small stores. They form a very significant portion of our city, bringing in significant amounts of revenue, forming a great service for the many products and services they provide to the residents of West Valley. With that then...
I might add, Mayor, I got a notification from one of my credit card companies today that it is Small Business Saturday, and they gave me a list of small businesses in West Valley that I could visit Saturday.
Very good. So you're gonna go visit those, huh?
Some of them.
Okay. Then the next item on our agenda is our comment period. Five minutes per person, no more than 30 minutes in total lane. And I'm not sure I recognize all the names here, so I would just remind you that this is your five minutes to speak, it's not a discussion, it's not a question-answer period. It's just for you to present your information, please speak to the mayor directly, not refer to others. It's not a chance to signal out any particular member of the council. We do have public hearings. Oh yes, that's right. Further in our agenda, some of you may have come here for the Heinz acquisitions, that's application Z5 2018, or, let's see, application S12 2018, Natalie Nichols, the America First Credit Union. Are those just the two? If you're here to speak to those, we will allow people to speak separately on those, but only to those issues. For anything else, you have to do it now. With that then, let's see, first one on here, Jim Visok. Did I get that close?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, Mayor. I'm here again asking for you to put on the docket the pet ordinance here in West Valley. I'm asking for change to that pet ordinance, but you guys need to put it on the docket. I want to adopt a cat from West Valley Shelter, this is Zoe, and she's been at the shelter for over four months. I currently have two cats, no dogs, no birds, anything else, but I can adopt it under the current ordinance. I could go adopt two dogs, but I can't adopt a cat. As of today, the shelter has 119 cats. It would have been 134, but yesterday, a rescue took 15 of them. So that's 17 more than last week, and I don't know how many were adopted, so it could have been even higher. I got those numbers this afternoon. I've talked to the shelter staff, and there's a lot more people out there like me that want to adopt a third cat, and right now, they just can't. I want to do it legally, you know? And so that's why I'm asking for you guys to put on the docket about, you know, changing the ordinance. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stan Dean?
Steve Dean.
Oh, Steve Dean, okay.
I've lived in West Valley City for 31 years, and we've had numerous neighborhood problems. And I had a neighbor that was a terrible neighbor for 25 years. And they were into drugs. I kept calling West Valley City, nothing ever got done. I didn't know what kind of drugs they were into. I talked to a neighbor, she said they're growers. They grew pot, they took their whole basement, turned it into a marijuana-growing facility. And they did it for 15 years, and nothing ever happened to them. And I had numerous problems with animal control with these people, had to go to animal control. And we went back and forth, and my dog got poisoned. I had a German Shepherd, and I drive truck, obviously, I work for Albertsons. I drove truck, and I went up to Wyoming, and the night before I drove my truck, my German Shepherd was barking at this man that I had all these problems with. He had a black cloud across the street, I didn't think too much about it. I come back from Wyoming, it was Friday, the wife informs me, the dog's not eating, he threw up. So we take him to a vet, you know, hopefully we get something ironed out, and she said, hey, he's got some massive infection, we don't know what's going on. That was on a Friday, and that was Dr. Gina at Redwood Animal Clinic. He didn't eat Saturday, he didn't eat Sunday, by Monday, he's on death star. So I take him up to ABC, Dr. Morgan said, well, I got bad news, you got 50/50 chance of losing this dog. I hand him my American Express, says it's good for $25,000. And I informed him, you don't want to be me, coming home without that dog. That was four years ago. And I had suspicions of who was behind it, but I couldn't prove it. Anyway, fast forward, you know, they finally move, I'm thinking we're safe, everything's cool, find out they're growing pot. The people next door moved in, and they're welfare people, food stamps, welfare, everything else. They see how much money these people are making, and they start doing the same thing. They had their son, the one that got my German Shepherd the first time, live with them and set up a grow facility. But it was a two-for-one special. He was to set up a grow facility and kill my German Shepherd. And unfortunately, Mayor, they were successfully killing my German Shepherd. You've never sat through anything so horrendous when you know your dog is plugged up. They plug up the intestines using tramadol. They seize him up, the intestines ulcerate, all that stuff flows into his body cavity, and he dies a painful miserable death. Because he can't tell me that his stomach's hurting him. Because he can't, he can't tell me that his stomach's hurting him. So anyway, after they killed my dog, I, you know, and I knew these rental people were, I knew he was staying there. And I said, so I called the state and I let them know, hey, they're growing pot. And so Alan with the State Fraud Division, let them know, hey, we've got 24 hours, you know, they're with Salt Lake County. They came out and did an inspection, but they moved all the pots. They moved all the plants. But right now, we've been experiencing just, I call the cops almost every day for noise violation. His favorite thing to do is he gets his SUV and parks it on his driveway and just blasts this rap music. And it's just an annoyance. And of course, the cops, it's a low priority call, so they take their time in getting out there, you know. One time, it was three hours before the cops showed up. And he's got view of both sides of the street. So what he does is, as soon as he sees the cops, he turns the stereo down. And then he'll have two or three of his buddies say, I don't know what you're talking about. So he doesn't get a citation. And this is just a continual problem in my neighborhood. The case number is 111-26858. And I don't know what we can do to remedy this, but I would think since they're on food stamps and welfare, we have the absolute right at any time to have an inspection. And I'm talking like one hour. So it's impossible for them to grow pot in the house and use, use our resources for their own end. I mean, and they suspect that I was the one that ratted them off because they killed my dog. You know, they'd have got away with it had they not killed my dog. So we're just going back and forth. I told the police, there's a neighborhood in back of me that they can pull into and they can't see them. And they can hear the stereo for themselves and issue a ticket. But that's where we stand. But Debbie told me to come and talk to you and tell you what's going on. So that's the reason why I'm here. Appreciate your time, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ben Nugent.
Hi there, Mayor. Appreciate you hearing me out today. I'm a little nervous. My first time here. Honestly, I didn't want to be here, but you know, I'm at emotional loss for what happened to my family. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. I'm here to reaffirm Mr. Jim's support of putting the pet and ordinance back on the docket there. The reason being is, right now, my household, I have, sorry, I have four, there are dogs by, they're, they're, they're my, they're my kids, you know? Every, every day I come home, I, I, I said, I see them at home. And this, this, they, they come on. And they say, man, I have to get rid of half of them. Thank you. It ruins my hope that they read my email. Like, how did they expect you to just choose like which, which one of your kids you're just gonna give away? We're, we're not doing anything wrong. My family, we've been living in West Valley for over 20 years. We, we have a good home. We can provide for our family. Like Jim, I went down to the shelter. I saw all of the cages of all the animals, all the cats, all the dogs, all of them caged up without homes. And here I am, I have a home and I can provide for my, for my family. But I can't, they came by my house and they, they gave me a fine, told me to get rid of half my kids. Or they're gonna continue to find me and get them taken away. But like, they'll, they'll, they said they could even go as far as petition a judge to get, to make sure we don't, well, we're not allowed to have any pets. How is that fair when I'm just trying to provide a home for my, for my family? I mean, I mean, there's so many other things we could use with our resources, you know? We can use like all of the commendations for all of the officers and prosecutors that are doing great work in taking bad people off the street. But we're targeting families just because they want to, just because they want to be able to raise more, more animals in their home. I mean, if I was, I mean, I, I don't want to move. You know, I love West Valley. We've been living here for 20-plus years. But I mean, if I don't have a choice, I know Salt Lake doesn't have this. I know Magna, Kearns, like, you know, Holiday. If I were to live in one of those other areas, we wouldn't have this problem. But because I happen to live in West Valley, I have to make this difficult choice. So I, I have no, I don't know what to do here. Been racking my brain for the past few days trying to see like where, like what am I gonna do? Moving's not easy. And now we're, you know, I've talked with everyone. I've consulted with animal control. I've consulted with everybody. I've been tried reaching out to your office and, and other resources. And basically what I was told at this time, this pretty much the only choice you have is just move. Because there's nothing that can be done at this point. So that's my situation. I just, I just hope that you can re, you know, put this under consideration, revise it. So that, you know, so that all these innocent animals that don't, wouldn't otherwise have a home, there's, you know, will be able to find a home. Because there's a lot of individuals out there like myself who have big hearts. They can support more than just, you know, having two dogs or two cats. And why shouldn't they be allowed to have them? I mean, what's the big, I mean, technically, as it stands right now, you could have four, but it just has to be split. So like, why can't you just have like instead of say two dogs and two cats, why can't you just have like say four dogs or four cats? But that's the situation as it stands. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Markham.
Mike Markham, she knows my address. Just a couple of questions because I've missed some meetings. And maybe somebody can take me aside and tell me what, where we're at on this. Where did we come out on gravel and parking and landscaping? Because we have a house in my neighborhood that has a giant fifth wheel parked on a cement slab, but it just barely clears the sidewalk. And alongside of it in his landscape gravel, which his entire front yard is gravel. He parks his vehicle that he tows it with. I don't know if he's considered it his landscaping, more parking. It's not landscape gravel. It's not landscape rock. It's gravel. So you guys had some discussions here not too long ago. Councilman Bueller had a house where they just parked their trailer right in front of their house because it was gravel. You don't know if it's landscape gravel or what it is. But you know, I'm kind of curious as to what you guys came up with that and if it's going to be enforced. I have another question too. And this goes back to our neighborhood preservation grouping at Lane's area. I have a used car lot in my neighborhood. I've, I've called the neighborhood preservation department. The officer went out, checked it out, said he couldn't see any sign of a car lot. Well, I guess I'm not very smart, but when I see a yard full of unlicensed cars and dealer plates, that tells me it's a car lot. I drove past there when the owner or the renter of the property is showing vehicles. To me, that's a car lot. I don't know what to do with it. I came home, when I left today to come down here, they had one of their vehicles, they bought a bunch of old police vehicles from auction or someplace. They had one of them pulled right up on the corner to where the nose of the car was even with, he was parked on King Arthur, and the nose of the car was even with Alice Way. So there's, you know, I know, I don't know the driver's handbook, but there are feet that people are supposed to stay parked away from corners. I left here one meeting and they had another car parked right in front of a fire hydrant. That's right there on the corner of Alice Way and King Arthur. So we called the dispatch they sent a car at. Heavens, no, they didn't ticket the person. They just asked them to move it. And like I said in numerous conversations, money talks. We need to issue citations. We had an old boy that used to come in here all the time, and I think he just gave up. He was moving snow one time and juggled his car around and got a citation because it was parked across the sidewalk. You know, I don't know how we can pick and choose which, who we're gonna cite and who we're not gonna cite. I have another home that I've called on numerous times that fortunately now, we're wintertime, the lawn has gone dormant. But with her dormant lawn, it looks better than it did during the summer. On the east side of the house, there is a aluminum fishing boat leaned up against the side of the house. It's kind of everything this homeowner doesn't want. They put over to the east side of their house. And nobody can seem to see anything wrong with it. I went over to help the neighbor that was doing some extensive yard work to roll some gravel and do different things. And the boat is there. There's an old patio picnic table leaned in there. There's a window door frame. Maybe she thinks the ivy's gonna grow over it. I can't get anything done. Right next to that corner, I don't know what the rules and regulations are for chicken coops and where they're supposed to be. But this person has a chicken coop right up in the front corner of their, of their backyard that is within nine feet of the neighbor's house and probably the front of the coop is probably within five feet of their house. Covered in black plastic that kind of blows around. You can hear the chickens. There used to be a rooster. Finally, the rooster they had for dinner or something, but the rooster is gone. At least you don't hear it. I don't know what has happened with neighborhood preservation. I don't know if the officers, when they drive through the neighborhood, they look straight down the road and don't look side to side. Lane tells me that they look and they drive through the neighborhoods and look, but I don't know what they're looking for. Because they're not seeing unlicensed problems, car lots. And to me, you know, for the officer to say he didn't see a car lot was crazy, but my fiber up.
Okay, thank you. A lot of food for thought. Was there anyone here, else here who wanted to speak in our public comment time? Seeing none, we'll close that public comment time. Our Assistant City Manager, any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Council members, any comments? Okay. We are, just for your information, we remind you that we, we have to be careful about discussing policy if it's not publicly noticed on our agenda. I will simply state for those who brought up issues on cats and dogs, we are having some discussions in our previous meeting, on our study meeting. And we will continue that discussion at some point in the future, in the near future. Some additional information's being gathered. The RV ordinance was heard by the council and was continued. It's back to the Planning Commission. See where that goes. The other issues, maybe just have staff take note of those and do a little bit of follow-up. We probably won't put those on our agenda, but look to see if staff can do some follow-up on those specific items that were mentioned. And you have the contact information here. See if we can follow up for that with staff. Is that, council okay with that? Okay. Then we go to item eight on our agenda, public hearing. This is regarding application Z-5 2018 filed by Heinz acquisitions. They are requesting a zone change from agricultural to manufacturing. This is property at 6279 West, 2551 South. That particular property is 48.8 acres. And this is an area where according to our West Valley City general plan, we're going to do a couple of things. One, where this is developing neighboring uses. There's an industrial park. The highway there will be extended through that property, hopefully eventually ultimately getting over to 2400 West and then tying into the Mountain View Corridor. They are looking at warehouse line industrial, total building area is over 600,000 square feet. And so those are kind of some of the key things. That's what the area is developing into and it's consistent with it. We think this is a positive thing. So they're doing two things. One, ordinance number 18-43 is to change the zoning. And then Resolution 18-204, development agreement for the property itself or the buildings that will go in there. Anything else council wants to add on that particular project? If not, then I will open this to public comment. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to this application and this ordinance and resolution, the zoning change and the development agreement? Seeing no one, then I'll close the public input portion. We'll bring it back to the council for their comments or action.
Move for approval of ordinance 18-43, second.
It's properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote. Before you take that though, because in case there's anyone here, most of you are frequent visitors. If we don't ask a lot of questions, don't think that we're not doing our job. This is the second time we've discussed this issue. So we always study it, ask a lot of questions in our prior study meeting, at least a week before, and then have, so if it seems like we don't ask a lot of questions, usually by this point, they've all been resolved. So with that, let's go ahead with the vote.
Councilman Fetis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, Resolution 18-204. Any? Move for approval of Resolution 18-204, second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Fetis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have also application S-12 2018 filed by Natalie Nichols, representing America First Credit Union. This is a plat amendment for a subdivision, 4100 South subdivision at 5576 West, 4100 South. This amendment, it will modify that property. It's on the northeast corner of that intersection of 5600 West, 4100 South. Right now, a vacant lot. And let's see, originally, there were two lots, 2.2 acres. But the one lot was set up for America First Credit Union, but it's larger than they need. So they're actually separating that. There's going to be one that is the newly created lot, 24,613 square feet, which will be located between the property that America First Credit Union will have on the corner and the AutoZone store on the north. So in between those, on the north side of that vacant lot, there will be something else. That'll be a separate piece of property. Anyway, we have this proposal before us. Anyway, we have this proposal before us, and that will include taking action on ordinance So with that introduction, any further comments from the council? Seeing none, is there anyone here, we'll open up a public comment, anyone here to speak to this? Another quiet evening. Boy, once you let the kids go from the school, it just gets quiet. Okay. Well, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment, we'll bring it back to the council for action or comment.
I move forward for approval, ordinance 18-44.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go on to our resolutions, item nine on our agenda. We'll begin with resolution 18-205. This is to approve two sub-grant agreements between West Valley City and Salt Lake County regarding the disbursement and use of home investment partnership funding. This is a program that has been going on for a while. The annual allocation of home funds from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of $295,848. This revenue will come in and has specific guidelines for its use, with certain homes that it may be invested in, and, you know, helping the individuals get into homes through down payment programs, things like that. It's a program that has gone on for a number of years, and this is a continuation in this year. With that introduction, to the council for any further comments or for a motion.
Move for approval of resolution 18-205, second.
Properly before us, any further comments? To our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution 18-206. This is again, an agreement between West Valley City and Salt Lake County. This is part of the Zoo Arts and Parks Funds that are being allocated to the Utah Cultural Celebration Center, $94,000. These funds are provided by the county, and we were one of many applicants, there were, I think, about 175 different applications for funds from the county in varying amounts, from, you know, $500 to $1,000, to, you know, I think ours was one of the larger ones, not the largest. And so these funds are distributed to various arts and culture organizations. And so in order to receive those funds, the county requires that we actually adopt a resolution regarding that, and that is what this is for. Those funds will be used over the next year, over this fiscal year. With that, then, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 18-206.
Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to resolution 18-207. This is approving an agreement between ourselves and DSL Consulting for professional services. This is for the period 1st of November this year through October 31st of next year. This is an $80,000 agreement. Dave Stewart has represented West Valley City for several years, the state legislature, and this has proved to be very beneficial to the city. And so this will be a continuation of this ongoing services for the next year. So with that, then, to the council.
Move for approval of resolution 18-207.
Properly before us, seeing no further discussion or comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, this next one, resolution 18-208, it's amending an agreement we already had, a memorandum of understanding between West Valley City and the Utah Prosecution Council. What this does, an agreement we entered into previously, they have found that the costs due to a grant have been lowered, and so we're modifying the agreement to reflect those lower costs for the software, something that will benefit the city significantly with these user licenses and the programs that are there. And so, this one, those positive things, where we get to save a little bit of money. With that introduction, to the council.
I move for approval of resolution 18-208, second.
Properly before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution 18-209. This is what we call an interlocal cooperation agreement between West Valley City and Salt Lake County Municipal Service District for construction of a storm drain project at 5600 West, 4700 South. This is $39,817.50. This particular storm drain project, that's our portion or our share of the project, and it's to, basically, to convert an old covert which carried water from the south side of 4700 South, under the road, adjacent railroad tracks, then just discharged the storm water onto property at the north side of the road. And that was okay for a while, but it really needs to go into the storm water system. That area was undeveloped, and so we're, this storm drain is being constructed, and so we're sharing the costs on that, since the runoff originates from Kern's Metro Township. And that's the purpose of this project, this agreement, interlocal cooperative agreement. With that, to the council.
Given the need, given the imminent need to improve the storm drainage at that intersection, I move to approve a resolution 18-209, second.
Properly before us, and seeing no further comments, by the way. I live further down, you know, 4700 South, and we've had a few floods come our way. It didn't flood the house, it just, you know, down the curb and gutter and up over the sidewalk and carrying all sorts of dirt and different things down there. With that, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have resolution 18-210. And this is a cooperative agreement between the city and UDOT, Utah Department of Transportation, for the construction of a road, 2550 South, between 5600 West, 7200 West, is the area that we're talking about. The project will, total cost is anticipated to be eventually of $4 million. This agreement provides for the first $1 million to come from the project from UDOT, and the remaining funds will come through other agreements. But this is the initial work for the design and construction of that road, anticipated to be that first segment completed in 2019. And the segment further to the east is dependent upon work being done on Mountain View corridor, so that's, won't happen until about 2021. That's the issue before us, to the council.
Move for approval of resolution 18-210, second.
Properly before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now, we have a fairly lengthy consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that, compared to the ones we just did, are even more routine and minor in their, well, I shouldn't say minor, they're not really expensive, they are significant in their impact. For example, the first, I think the first, let's see, the first one is a perpetual easement that we need at 1824 West, 3500 South. Many of the others, there's three on our 4100 South project, these are right-of-way contract, warranty deeds, temporary construction easements for various properties. And then, after that, starting at 216, I think most of the rest of those are for a project, probably the easiest way to describe that is the property that is north of the driver's license building and their driving range. A lot of work going on there, and so there are, again, right-of-ways, construction easements, some are perpetual easements, but it's in order to get roads and different things in order there, and work done for that project to go forward. Did I cover all of them? With that, then, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of the fourteen items on the consent agenda.
Second. Properly before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes our regular agenda for our regular council meetings. And so, we do have another short meeting after this with an important piece of work to be done. So with that, motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If those both say no, it passes unanimously, our regular meeting is adjourned.
A call to order our special RDA meeting. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and that we excuse Ms. Karen Lane, and the rest of our members are present, with Mr. Isaac filling in for Mr. Pyle tonight. We have one resolution to authorize the agency to execute a right-of-way and easement grant in favor of Questar Gas Company. Mr. Isaac, any thing you or you want to say about that?
Yeah, that is correct, and it's to install a natural gas line on the RDA's property to service our new public service building.
Thank you. All right, I turn to the agency to make a motion or add more comments.
Is it really necessary that we have gas service to the public safety building?
Well, they're used to being in the cold.
Well, I think it's probably a good idea. Now, for approval of resolution 18-09.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion and a second, and any other discussion? All right, we'll turn to our secretary for the roll call vote.
Mr. Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Mr. Bueller.
Aye.
Mr. Hune.
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
And Chairman Norfelt.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, that concludes our business, so we'll have one more motion.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.